It wasn't even a hurricane.
Oh.
It was a storm.
Which one?
Sandy.
I don't know. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
What about the Halloween one? Halloween one in 95?
Yeah.
Was it 95? Where the septic was all showing on Doom Road. I remember that one.
That was 92. That's what we have out there now.
92, I could be wrong. No, 92, yeah, 92.
That's what cut through West Hampton.
Right.
Doom Road, West Hampton.
This is what I'm saying.
Oh, no, is this the evening agenda? Oh.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just Patty was mentioning, just in terms of your schedule, on October 24th, your public hearing that evening is Southampton Day Camp.
Ah. Are you serious?
It's gonna be a really long meeting.
Is that, is it mandatory, that one?
And we're gonna be downstairs.
On the way.
What do we have, a public hearing on?
Well, we're coming in at 10 o'clock to do findings.
It's called a 10 to 10.
We have the camp at night as a public hearing?
Yes.
So that means we just have to stay awake?
Correct.
So let's get coffee in and bring some food.
Bring a tent.
It's called a half day. A day is 24 hours, and you're gonna be here for twelve. That's half day, right?
Well, we have to do, we have to do, I mean, we can't get a bloody extension on this.
No, it wasn't about extension, it was if you wanted to try and do a special meeting next week. But I can't be here Thursday because I'm running the election, so.
No, 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 no.
No, we'll do it before. We'll do the long day.
No, we have no choice.
We have no choice.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know.
I don't want it, but I don't wanna get.
It's a consequence.
Jackie, we're gonna have a work session on Lewis Road at 10 o'clock.
Right.
They're gonna come in and explain their position.
No, we're gonna have a work session on finding statement. Mike is coming.
Mike is coming.
We have to wrap that up.
Will.
I know you do.
That's all we're gonna hear from Mike.
That's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all.
But I do have several.
And if the pod barons come in.
And you're gonna let the applicants.
And then the regular session during the day
During the work session.
will review the revised staff report that Anthony won't.
The limit to.
Adding all that.
Will the applicants say anything?
Yes, they'll listen.
They may.
I mean, they can say, you know, after the work session, we're willing to give it to you.
The motions are being presented.
Yeah.
But you know, think of the.
It will be downstairs.
That's the test.
Yeah.
So. And we are downstairs.
You know, it's not.
But at night, we're in.
We're in. For the auditorium, half of the auditorium.
Can I suggest we get some light?
I know you're gonna need to hear. And I'm not talking to any application.
Dennis.
We're going through, you guys just go through.
But, you know, that's why I'm sure.
We must've started one, the evening session started at 1:00.
Yeah.
We had a work session, we had a work session at 10.
And then the, that's what I'm saying.
Regular day at 1:00.
But we would toggle the work sessions.
Usually we don't get the stuff until.
Weeks we had evening meetings, we wouldn't have the.
I shut down at 5:00.
Vice versa.
So they were long days.
And we met four times a month!
That's what I'm saying.
That's right, we met every.
Bobby Ross said, "You're nuts trying," he says, "Go on his own, he bought it so much easy." But that's, it was amazing, you know, it was like 12 hours.
They were rescuing some.
Absolutely.
10 o'clock was not unusual.
And every other application was like the hills. McDonald's, and Doffler Bridge, which was the hills' first bridge. Yeah, Hampton Bay's Vice President.
And you walked to school without shoes in the snowstorm.
I was gonna say. Good.
Hi.
You joining us, sir?
Oh, no, actually, I gotta express my.
I thought you were gonna bring us coffee.
We have coffee.
Wow!
I need another napkin, everyone.
Seriously?
You're gonna hatch your legs?
Thank you.
Nothing, nothing on me.
Did you bring us dinner?
Nobody here.
I guess, no, you already got candy.
That's Catholic.
I've had enough candy.
Alexandra's.
Loves this.
He loves this.
Get the lights going.
Oh.
They're like, he declared state of emergency, I'm like, he sure did.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Jay? Is he wearing his jacket?
Yes!
Does he have his jacket on?
Yes! Wants the lights on the top.
Yes, I'm punished.
At least he knows, because he's gonna laugh at it, so.
We can appreciate that.
He said, "You gotta get a little helmet," it's a little light on top.
He's got the little jacket with the seal.
Yeah, 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 that's funny.
There are a lot of people who live there.
Oh, that's funny.
Kathy, I'm angry at you.
I know, no, I understand that. Listen, I take responsibility for not being more.
Yeah.
Like, you know. Chicken Brier, which is the second one.
Talking with him.
I'll write it, Heather Wright's the applicant, she didn't sign up.
Okay, and can you tell me, are any of these the applicants?
The first story, the applicant.
The community.
Just make a note of that one. I'll just put down applicant.
Certainly seems to be answered, because we stuck it out there, and I don't like that.
And what did you want to add?
Heather Wright.
Now it's second.
She'll be first, she's the applicant.
I hear you, I mean, we can keep talking. Alternative, you know.
I don't know.
I want, we have to work on.
Okay. I wanna keep saying August 26th. October 10th, 2019, 2019, it's the public hearing for the planning board, it were called to order. Roll call, please.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finnerty.
Present.
Secretary is here, Board Member Blaney is absent. Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Burke.
Present.
And Board Member Zuccarelli is, he's here, right? Yeah, he's just.
He's not here now, so.
All right. He'll be back. But we have a quorum.
Good. Do please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming, just a few safety announcements before we start. Two doors, exiting, two rear doors. Go down to the stairs and out the front door. I know it's raining, but that's the way it is. And if you are speaking, we've asked you to sign in these sign-in sheets. I see a whole group of people coming now. They're all, they're all signed in. So we'll, we'll call you by name for the application, and you can come up, you don't have to sign anything in. We have you here. So the first item on the agenda
Yeah.
is the Eastport Bible Church Family Life Center. Dennis, are you gonna, do we have Kathleen?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have jurisdiction.
We have jurisdiction.
Please take notice in accordance with the Town Code of the Town of Southampton, a pre-submission conference will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 10th, 2019 at 6:00 PM prevailing time for Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton. To consider the pre-submission application titled "Eastport Bible Church", this site plan special exception proposes action on four parcels totaling 2.108 acres to demolish two single-family dwellings and to construct a member meeting building with 86 associated parking spaces located within the R-20 zoning district and within the high priority WQI area situated at 386 Main Street, as well as 4, 6, and 8 Tuttle Avenue hamlet of Eastport. By order of the Planning Board, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Now Grant Willman and Craig Tinglehart are representing. Dylan Ha, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Of Planning Board. As you know, Eastport Bible Church has applied for a pre-submission conference, a site plan pre-submission conference, and are here tonight to provide you with an overview of what we're proposing and answer any questions you may have. And our proposal, as Grant is here, is setting up the easel, is to construct the 6,000-square-foot accessory multi-purpose building on our existing church property, which is comprised of four tax lots totaling 2.1 acres. Parking, landscaping, and other standard site improvements are proposed along with the new building. The new building will, area will be, will directly connect with the paved, the existing paved parking lot on the southern portion of the site. This is the overall property. This is the proposed building, this is the existing building out on Montauk Highway. This is our existing parking lot here, and it will be connected. The new building will require the removal of two existing residential structures which are approximately located there. The building will be used for weekly youth and children's ministries, as well as other various church-related events and gatherings. It is anticipated that approximately 2/3 of the floor area would be an open assembly area, and the remaining 1/3 would be comprised of church offices, a kitchen, restrooms, foyer space, and a storage area. The property is located on the north side of Montauk Highway and on the east side of Tuttle Avenue here. The property is adjacent to an auto repair business located on the corner of Montauk Highway and Tuttle Avenue. And adjacent to the north is a single-family residence, and adjacent to the east is the Eastport Cemetery. The new building is proposed, as you can see, to be on the northern portion of the property, adjacent to the Tuttle Avenue frontage, and is directly opposite from the Eastport Elementary School, as you can maybe see on an arrow photo, if you have that. There's landscaping and buffering provided around the perimeter of the northern portion of the property where the building is going. I have colored, colored three-dimensional rendering, if you'd like to see it, or additional copies of the elevations, and I'm here to answer any questions that the board might have.
Is this a shared parking arrangement?
Yes, it is. It'll be, it'll be, it'll be one parking area for the, for the church property, yes.
And what's the number of your parking spaces?
There's approximately 86 parking stalls.
86 parking, and you're okay with, you're all right, you're not under?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, yeah, that's based on the, the most, the use, that's the most abandoned, which would be the church building itself, which has capacity of 251 seats, and that's what the 86 was based off of.
What type of activities will be taking place?
We have several, you know, during the week, youth and children's ministries. We have a couple of things that go on on Tuesday nights for kids, girls, pioneers, it's called Pioneer Girls. Wednesday nights, we have Christian Service Brigade for young, grades 3 through 6, boys program. We have our youth group, which meets one, one night a week, which is Thursday. We have an after-school program, it's called Hang Time, for several kids that are involved in that. Basically, it would be used also for other, other church events that are gatherings, you know, during, during the year.
Is there a kitchen?
Would you be renting?
No. It is our intent that it be used specifically for our church, our church ministries.
So there'll be a kitchen?
There will be a small kitchen, yep.
And you have no plans for catering, or?
No, it would just be used for, like, we have a potluck dinner, or something like that, that's our.
But now for outside, like, for weddings, or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay, any other questions? Let's see, if someone, anyone from the public would like to speak, yes, please.
Yeah.
No, you have to come up, you have to come up to the mic and give us your name when you do.
Sure.
Hi, yeah, I'm Pete Caspum, I'm an Eastport resident. Just wanted to find out, is there an opportunity for communities to have meetings for local community organizations in the church's building, or is that prohibited?
You have to, you're gonna have to come up to the podium, the audio equipment won't pick it up otherwise, so you can respond to him, please.
Sure.
Let's stand here and talk.
So, yeah, you know, it would be on a case-by-case basis, you would have to make a request, I guess, to.
There would be approval.
Church facility, or, you know.
Yeah, it wouldn't be political, it would be service-related, that type of thing, or community support, beautification, that type of thing. It wouldn't be anything that would be controversial, if that's what the concern is.
Yeah, we, it would have to go before the church board, you know, okay, you have to look, do it that way.
Sure. And when would all of this begin, if approved?
I know, this is just the.
Speak into the microphone.
This is just the very first step in the process.
So it's not around the corner?
We are not 100% sure, but we're gonna keep moving forward through the process for approvals.
Probably fundraising involved, too.
Yes.
Fund dependent.
Okay, so just direct your questions to us, and he can answer them.
Sure.
That's the way it goes.
Would, would there be community involvement as this thing is developed, once, if the board approves them to proceed?
Well.
Public hearing.
This is essentially the community involvement. Our scope is, is the structure and the parking and the lighting. The actual operation is a private facility. They have the, the sole discretion to open it to other outside groups.
It's up to them.
It's, it's really not involved, doesn't involve the town.
That's what I wanted to know.
Not a planning board issue.
Fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to the application? Okay. Hearing none, it's a 30-day written comment period, it's a pre-submission application.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second, second by Robin, all in favor. I oppose extension, six in favor, one absent, 30 days.
Oh, it's got a lot to say.
Uh, second is, number two is Chicken Brier Hill.
Are we good, counsel?
Uh, one moment. Yes, Madam Chair, we have notice.
Notice of public hearing, please take notice in accordance with the Code of the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October 10th, 2019, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the pre-application entitled "Chicken Brier Hill". The pre-application consists of a reduced-density planned residential development subdivision plan with four lots and open space parcel on a 3.8450-acre acre property situated in the R-20 zoning district, located within the hamlet of Eastport at 38 North Bay Avenue, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 9003501-62. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Heather Wright for the applicant?
Yes, Heather Wright, 30 Main Street, Southampton, New York. We're here tonight for a pre-submission hearing on the application of Chicken Brier Hill. The address is 38 North Bay Avenue. As was mentioned, the parcel is 3.8450 acres, or 167, 691 square feet. Actually, the applicant made this same application in 2004, obtained Health Department approval at that time, and then just didn't end up pursuing the application. So now, many years later, we're, we're back here looking to, we know we have to start over, but we're looking to bring this application before the board. This is the R-20 zoning district, which requires a minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet. So what we're proposing, while the yield is, is six lots here, what we're proposing is four lots which exceed, which exceed zoning, and then an open space lot here in the middle. The open space lot was placed here to, for stormwater runoff and to encompass, you know, the natural drainage in this concrete sloughway that we have right down here, in the, here in the center of the property. We designed this, and this was per the recommendation of the board back in 2004. We have a common driveway to access Lot 1 and Lot 2, and a flag here with common access for Lot 3 and Lot 4 to minimize the curb cuts on North Bay, on North Bay Avenue. You know, the open space is 26.11% of the total, of the total parcel here. We do believe that the subdivision meets the criteria for minor review by this board. We're, we're creating only four lots, encompassing the entire parcel. And we've got the, we've got common access here, the flag strip meets the requirements of 29238F of the Town Code. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
The, the open space, the southern leg of the open space, well, it buffers.
Town.
It buffers, hmm, well, that's town land.
Mm-hmm.
Have you considered any buffering on Lot 3 from the homeowners?
Well, I'm not quite sure that's necessary, given that we've got a driveway that comes in here. So we've got the driveway that would be between the proposed lot and the, the existing, existing lot here. In fact, it actually appears that some of the, the lots, maybe frame shed and lawn encroaches onto the proposed Lot 3. And then obviously, we'd be, we'd be held to the R-20 zoning setback requirements for both primary and accessory structures.
So the answer to that, my question?
No, the answer's, no, the answer's not no, I mean, we can certainly explore it, but I'm just pointing out to you that I think there's a natural buffer here that's created by the driveway and the existing improved, existing improvements on the lot down here.
Is there a drainage issue on this property?
Yes, I believe so, which is why we, at the recommendation of the board last time, we positioned the open space in the center of the proposed development.
Is it coming off farm fields somewhere to the?
Uh, farm fields are up here, across North Bay Avenue.
Any other questions?
This drainage goes into a property, yeah, I'm looking at it, I drew it.
The town property, yeah.
That's a town piece of property.
Yeah. Now, formerly, the town, town still owns that, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there public water in North Bay?
Yes, there is.
There is?
Mm-hmm.
Just two, two, just a question to Jackie's. I see there's an asphalt driveway here, but the access would be from North Bay, correct?
The access would be from North Bay. Yes, correct.
All right, and that would come down, that would feed Lot 4 and 8.
And Lot 3.
So the chair's recommendation of perhaps some buffer on that.
Lot 3?
Yeah, on Lot 3 is to, to buffer against the properties of Myers and Nicholson and down here.
Right, it would just be the property, that would just be Myers and Nicholson. Correct. Again, it's not, I'm not saying we're opposed to it, I just was pointing out that I thought the fact that Myers and Nicholson's driveway is between the lot, proposed lot, and here does create some sort of buffer, but obviously, if the board is recommending a buffer here, that, you know.
You're open.
Yes.
Okay, well, let's hear from some of the public, I have quite a few names. Jim Murphy.
My name is Jim Murphy, I live at 29 North Bay Avenue in Eastport. Upon receiving this packet from the law firm, noticed some inconsistencies, maybe you can address them, or the law firm. It says here in handwriting from the applicant, Gene Tuttle, that there's no farming operations within 500 feet of his property. There's a farm directly across the street where I live.
Where are you?
Well, maybe the lawyer can show me.
Sure, I can, and in fact, that is, that was an error in the application, and we've since notified the neighbors as required. Well, you're not a farm owner, the code requires that we notify the owners of the farmland within 500 feet of the proposed development, which we've done, and we've submitted a revised statement to the planning department. And the farmland is here, across North Bay Avenue.
Right behind me, that's where I live.
So it's right there, yeah.
Yeah.
And you live, sir, where?
I live right across the street at number 29, on the proposed subdivision.
Good, okay.
Is this gonna be a clear-cut subdivision, where they just cut all the trees down?
Well, there are, would be clearing restrictions, I don't, where are we, R-20? I don't know.
It's not the APOD.
We're not APOD or any overlay districts, I mean.
So it's not. Typically seek to preserve, we typically seek to preserve, though, the, the natural vegetation. I think the applicant would be willing to.
Well, he didn't seem too willing to build a buffer, just when you brought that up, so I just wanted to verify.
We're in the beginning stages.
Yeah.
Well, we, we started this in 2004, correct? Once before?
But that's.
It's null and void?
Yes.
Okay, so now it's all done over, okay.
Yeah.
When will this project start, if approved by the board?
Sometimes these lots might sit there for 20 years.
Okay.
It's up to the applicant.
Are all the homes gonna be built at once, or is it a?
There again, it's up to the.
Same, it's up to the.
It's up to the applicant.
Yeah.
So us as neighbors can be exposed to construction?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Now, other people who live right next door, when they built the garage, how to get a wetland permit? House number 30, North Bay Avenue? That was recently, a few years ago?
Yes, they have to get wetland permits when they.
So the, the subdivision will have to get that also?
Um, the lots have to get them also when they go, come in for building permits. If they're within 200 feet of, are they within 200 feet of the wetlands?
Well, it's considered a wetland, because there's an underground tributary system that goes to East Pond, and then goes out to South Bay.
Oh, no, I didn't. I'd have to see the direction. I thought they were wetlands, I'm looking at the septic setbacks. If they're within 200 feet of wetlands, they gotta get a wetland permit.
Okay, and there'll be another hearing, or that's not a public hearing?
No, that's not a public.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, as far as their locations of their private wells, I mean, their private cesspools on these new lots, what about the homes that have wells?
That's, their map shows a septic, and I, I don't think you had that map.
I don't.
You take a look at this one. I noticed it shows the existing wells.
Because I have one.
Yeah, and then the, the 150-foot separation, you see the dotted lines with the arrows?
So where I live at 29, on one side of North Bay, they're gonna have septic across the street.
Yeah.
And I have a well, and I also have city water, so how is that?
Oh, was your, well, if you have, if you have, are you on a well, or a town?
I have both right now.
You have town water?
What I'm saying is, my well was, I drink septic water.
Drink septic water, you use the well for irrigation purposes.
It's gonna go eventually, right?
Yeah, it goes, it's for irrigation.
Then your lot, house is exempt, if you're hooked up to public water.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, a couple more questions. In 2004, when they first began the process, I met the, one of the owners from Pennsylvania, Gene Tuttle's son. They had a backhoe in the woods, and they were digging up. So I walked over to see what they were doing, and he told me, he doesn't have to tell me, but that parcel of land that they want to maintain as the natural open space is what they used for duck waste, when they had the duck farms, the tuttles. It's still in the ground, and it's over wetlands. Are they gonna have to remediate it before they sell the property? Or do we just ignore it? This is all nitrogen.
Well, is there a chemical or organic material?
Dead ducks, duck waste, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, the town typically does what they call a 1A environmental audit before they take title to that. That parcel is proposed to be dedicated to the town, correct? We usually do an environmental audit, but we do test holes and stuff before we take title.
So they're not, they don't.
If there's any pollution, and it will know, you know.
If it's polluted, we don't want it.
Yeah.
Right, so what I'm saying is, it's there right now, it's full of nitrogen, so it's a family.
Nitrogen, yeah, I mean, probably, all these old, all these farm fields are loaded with nitrogen.
Well, this wasn't a farm field, this was a dumping.
Duck farm, or just a dump.
But I'm saying the farms and the duckways, there's nitrogen, yeah, no doubt.
So they would have to remediate it before?
It depends if it's, it depends.
Okay.
I can't speak to the specific.
Would we be told if that's a problem? Being a neighbor, or no?
No.
Yeah, I guess you could go to the planning department, and there's a certain amount of information, it's public record.
No, what I'm saying is, are we gonna be told that that's gonna be rectified, or is it just gonna be left?
No.
No.
No, if, if an environmental, uh, assessment comes in and says, points to something that's over certain parameters, it would have to be corrected.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Mike, Michelle Hines McKelly?
I guess it was, they had duck farms all over, I suppose.
Hi. My name's Michelle Hines, Michelley, I live at 35 North Bay Avenue, Eastport.
35.
I am afraid of, um, my investment, I live directly across the street from the proposal, uh, what you have here. I invested a lot of money into my house, and I feel as if they build something that's less than what I've restored, then I will lose on my investment. Besides that, what Jim was saying about the duck refuse, the people that lived there the longest told me that not only did they dump their five yards every day, but they did it for 50 years. So, the people in Eastport are very, very concerned about the environmental impact, but also the impact that it might have on the people of Eastport and their health. We are also concerned that that is the only area of woodland on the road. The only access to the water east, on East Pond Lane, for all of the animals that come through there daily, all day, every day. To lose that would be to be, to, to lose a big part of our community and what everybody's attracted to in the first place. So, I am against any building, and would prefer that it be kept natural, for the people and for the animals. That's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
There again, our role is to determine how the creation of these four lots impacts that possible environmental hazard. If you feel, if the community feels there's an environmental hazard there, you should go to the DEC, 'cause it could sit there for another 50 years.
That's true, and I am a new neighbor.
Yeah, you guys all have wells, there are a lot of wells around here. So, if you feel there's an environmental hazard, don't wait for the four lots that are not gonna address it or clean it up.
Absolutely, I've only recently heard about that.
Yeah.
So, it is a very big concern, but other people have heard about it as well. Will there be testing done on the site?
Well, you can, if you go to the DEC.
But, I mean, if nobody went to the DEC and then there was a builder to build there, would there, because of the environmental concerns, even without that?
Based on testimony, I think we would do an environmental.
Well, that's, that's satisfactory.
That area is earmarked to be dedicated to the town, the town's gonna test that before they take it over. They find environmental impacts on that parcel, they're not gonna take it in.
Okay, and, you know, I do have another question, they have the, the boxes of poop at the front of each of the places. There's one directly in front of my house, but.
A box of what?
Where they keep, the, the new systems, the, uh, the system for waste? The septic systems, is that what they are? The boxes that they keep all of the waste in.
I'm not quite sure.
How, how did they handle that, when?
I don't, can, can you?
I'm sorry, I don't know what.
I don't know what.
The new septic system designed at the town.
Oh, the AI, yeah.
Oh, the AI, they haven't been installed yet.
They haven't been.
No, but they, they are proposed to go in those areas, are those cemented in, like, is that final? No, 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 I mean, the, the, the idea of it, is it final, are they going in those places, or can they be moved if it is approved by the board?
We don't know.
The health department really determines where the, the systems go in.
Okay.
They just drew them in on the map to show that they can.
So, it's not set in stone, is what I mean?
Oh, yeah, no.
Okay.
But, that said, you don't have any input to where they go, the health department decides it.
Right, okay, I see that, I understand, thank you.
It's based on where your well is, is, there are rules about how close for safety reasons.
Okay, so if I have one in my basement, directly across, they would have to move it over a little bit, maybe?
The board of health will look at that.
Okay, so that we would have to go to the board of health and get their determination?
Yes, the board of health controls where the septic systems are gonna be placed, the size of the septic system.
And they would take the wells into consideration?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
That's the first thing.
Thank you.
Is it, is it Jan, Michelley, or John?
Yeah, that was my wife, I put my name under hers in case she forgot anything.
That's smart.
'Cause I'm her support animal. But, um, no, that's what we, my main concern was the, the new septic system. I've seen them, where they have them above ground, and they just cover them with dirt.
Oh, no.
You know, like, like a dome of dirt?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
So, um, the, where is it, right here? This one right here is directly in front of my driveway, so that was my, that was our big concern, that this would be sticking out of the ground and.
No, they're, they're subs, they're all subsurface.
The thing about North Bay is, as you drive down, you see that every house is different. So, like, every lot was created, someone bought it and built a house. So, why wouldn't this guy subdivide his land and sell the lots and give people the opportunity, maybe, maybe I would wanna buy the lot across from me, which would be connected to your open space lot, which is here? You know what I'm saying?
Well, we don't have elevations on what the buildings are going to look like, they have, that has.
Well, that's another thing, too, I mean.
Yeah, this is very preliminary.
Yeah.
Well, and then our investment, so I could've, um, I could've bought a brand-new house, built anywhere I wanted, but we saw this house and we fell in love with it. It was an extreme disrepair, uh, Bill Hine is actually my witness, I don't wanna get him in any trouble, but I had to go through the historic society to get a permit to add a kitchen and bathroom to my house, and, um, everyone was impressed with my work. We took this old house that I had to, um, fight with a builder to win the bid. He was gonna knock it down and, um, build whatever, 'cause it has two meters, so that's why he wanted it. So, we fought all the way up, I think we paid like $4.15, and I've already put a lot into it. So, my main concern is, what is he gonna put across the street? What are the property values, because if, if it drops my property value or caps me, I'm gonna have to, um, look into, you know, some kind of, uh, compensation for that, you understand what I'm saying? So, I don't wanna put the, uh, builder in litigation for five years, but I think the option should be made. You know, like, why do we have to accept that a builder's gonna come in, build four houses? And I know you said it could take 20 years, 50 years, whatever, but I would rather see that consistency stay. You know, maybe, maybe they build on lot one, or build on lot four, and then, like, I would buy lot two, you know what I mean? Like, just.
We don't control that.
I know, I'm just saying that, when, if you're considering whether to let them subdivide, divide for a builder to get his permits to build four houses.
You can't control it.
Not appropriate consideration.
Go ahead.
Just maybe clarify.
Go ahead.
You have to use the mic.
Clarify, clarify, two points.
Okay.
To use it back.
Please.
Um, the, the first point is that the, on here where you're seeing these?
Yeah.
This is so that we can get, um, approval from the subdivision, uh, from the health department for the subdivision itself. This is, we have to show that these systems can fit on this property, but that, that doesn't mean it's going there. And, and the other point I wanna make is that this is not a developer, a developer, when, when this went through in 2004, it was the same owner, she hasn't sold this property to a developer who's now coming in. It, she's, just as part of her overall state plan, she's looking to the future and, and proposing this subdivision, but there's no, um, plan that I'm aware of, and I think I can state this, that she's building four houses that are all gonna look the same in a, a, this is a very preliminary, um, proposal. So, I just wanna ease some concerns here.
'Cause what, I was, I was under the impression that a builder has interest in this to develop.
I have no knowledge of that, so I, I don't, I have to.
Okay, so I think we've answered some of your questions, right?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean Kamiski?
Hi, how you doing? Sean Kamiski, I live at, uh, 40 North Bay, uh, so I'm probably, uh, the first person, we all spoke, we all care about Eastport, but I'll be affected, uh, pretty extremely here. Uh, some points that I appreciate that you brought up is the lack of a buffer. And, uh, I don't know if you guys can clarify what you were talking about before, I don't know why there's a cement sleuthway, or whatever you called that before in this open space area, what?
I think it's the remnants of an old duck farm, right? Is that, is that what that is?
Cement sleuthway, yeah.
That's the remnants of an old duck.
So, that's just, it was cement and, and waste or whatever was put in there, like, I just heard from, uh, the other speaker.
Probably one point, I don't know.
Not really cement, just animal waste.
Just animal waste into a certain area. Uh, I, I know you guys are busy and you don't, uh, I can, the, the topography of this i- is hard to explain on a piece of paper. When you go out there, it's a, a deep, I would guess, a long ditch that runs parallel to North Bay. Also, uh, it's one of the lower points, I would probably say just south of, of this, or, so this is, is one of the lower points on the street in North Bay, how it pitches both ways. And then, on the opposite side, on East Pond, where the town owns that land, that is probably, I could say, pretty sure that's the lowest point on East Pond. So, the drainage issue is a big deal, and now, when you're talking about it, I know you're just here to approve it, but we don't know what kinda houses they're gonna build, and however they build it is gonna affect the runoff going into these two houses, myself at 40 and the Capurso's at 42.
According to town law, every drop of rainwater has to be held on their property. Everything from the roof, they, they're gonna be required to put in dry wells, they can't just throw their gutters and out on their lawn, they gotta go into dry wells, and every, and have to grade it, so not one drop of water's allowed to leave.
No, no, and I, and I understand, and that's why government is good to, to put in the codes, but during the process of building, when the excavation happens and everything, my property in, in the lower, uh, third, which would be over, over here, drops about 20 feet from, from the, the normal driveway.
Where's your property?
I thought you, no, North Bay is on the other side.
Yeah, I'm at 40 North Bay.
They go up the other way.
No, I'm, I'm right here, this is the corner, and your, your property.
He's, he's, it's coming down this flag lot.
Your, your property, yes, you come down the road, and, and your property, meaning your property, the town property, means in that corner. So, so I think you guys bought that property because of the low lining area and.
For drainage.
On, on, on East Pond, you know, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's definitely a concern, and, and, and I think, you know, before, somebody should actually look at it, because the map can say something, and maybe you can read the map better than I can, but it's important to realize what is gonna happen. And during the construction phases of all this, it is gonna cause water to come here, you know, I, I, you know, I, I know that, and I know that after it's built, maybe it will come up, but I don't know if that's gonna cause down.
Well, the engineer, engineers, the town engineers are going to look at this, and they're going to require XYZ, whatever they need.
They gotta put a, a silk fence and hay bales.
Hay bales.
Around the perimeter of the property, inspector comes on the property, if he sees anything going past that site, they stop the job. The builder has to immediately remedy it, if the builder does it, the town comes in, does it, and assesses the taxes. So, if you see one drop of water come off during construction, call the building department.
Well, do you see how it can be, just right here, with, with you spotted early on when you just looked at the plans, from this driveway coming down and, and all that, so it, it's a concern, and, and I'm more concerned now learning about what this property in front of my house was used for, and, and I, I think it's important that, before any approvals are, that, that someone that does, goes out to the site and looks at it, because there's definitely, there's definitely stuff going on, which, that's why the town bought that prop. I'm wrong, I'm speaking out of context, I don't know why the town bought that property, but I would guess it was for drainage.
Uh-huh.
But I, I, I just think it's important, too, you know, it seems like, like something suspicious why they wanna have, give that part of that, the property to the town. Because, like, as you said, it would make sense to put a buffer from the neighbors, make everyone happy, and they chose not to. So, that, that just seems suspicious to me. And I'm, and I'm sure, you know, now with the neighbors and, and everyone is concerned, we're gonna look into it and possibly ask the DEC to look at it.
Let's have the applicant respond.
I just wanna clarify that originally, our original, and I wasn't involved, obviously, but in 2004, the original subdivision proposal, um, didn't have this here. It actually had them all fronting, um, North Bay with the space in the back, but it, at that time, it was the board's recommendation to be more appropriate to have the open space here for drainage purposes, so I just point that out.
Well, we can look at, as the process moves along, and this is early in the process, we can look at the configuration of the lots, get some engineering information to see that perhaps this configuration is not going to work, or there might be a better configuration. But we appreciate the fact that you pointed it out.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The planner will go to the site and, and look at it.
Yeah, we'd appreciate if you did that, I'm sure.
That's, that's part of the process, that's normal.
Right.
We don't go, but the planner who's.
The planner, well, we, because any excavation that's gonna done is gonna adversely affect us if it's not properly done.
Sure, understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Caporso?
Hi, I'm Ralph Caporso, 42 North Bay Avenue, and I, um.
We see you, yeah.
We see you.
Okay.
Linda and Ralph.
Yeah, so my concern is the effect it's gonna have on my property value and the open space that I've been accustomed to there for the 26 years that I'm living there.
Is your property also low, lower than?
Uh, not as low as Sean's, Sean's, the, by Sean's is where it starts to drop.
Mm-hmm.
And in, where my, the common driveway between me and Sean, it drops there also, so I am higher at that point. So, I don't have the same concerns that he, he would be more. My, my biggest thing is the, the, you know, the open space and, and the effect it's gonna have on my property value, that we have up. From my house, I'm gonna be looking at two backyards. I was here in 2004 when they first proposed it, and it, it wasn't like this, it was, you know, for, it was, it was access from the street, and, and it wasn't gonna be an impact, because my well from the property edge there is, if I was to guess, it's probably 40 feet.
So, you're on well water?
I'm on well water, yeah, yeah, 'cause I'm so far off the street.
Yeah. Okay, we'll take a look at that, that's great, thank you. And Linda Caporso? You're gonna tell us what he forgot to say, right?
I know, I'm at 40. Um, I, I am very against how I'm looking at, you know, two backyards, like I said, we've been there the whole time, 26 years, enjoying the woods, enjoying the wildlife. The property to the north has went in and cleared all the trees. There are no requirements in Southampton Town to limit what can be cleared, and that makes a huge impact on us in the back. We pull up a long driveway that's all wooded, and, you know, we just are very opposed to it being cleared.
Right.
We only have the well water, that's our drinking water, so that's a huge impact on us.
Okay, I hear you.
Now, bear in mind, they're in a zone where they could come in tomorrow and clearcut that entire piece, they didn't do subdivision.
I understand that, and I'm very against that, I mean, just, just the layout, there is no buffer.
So are we.
You're saying the driveway's a buffer, it's a one-car driveway that the two of us share, between 40 and 42, we share one driveway.
Right.
It is very narrow, so that's my front yard, we're looking at four lots.
The map at the top is what they're entitled to, under zoning code. They could withdraw the bottom map and push the top map, and we'd have no ability to limit that.
So, they're entitled to a five lot?
Six lots.
Six lot subdivision.
And they go, coming in with four. Six smaller lots are gonna be six smaller houses.
More impacted.
Which is gonna, I heard people worry about property values, so larger lots are gonna sell for more money, you're gonna get higher-end houses.
Well, it depends what they build on a larger.
Exactly.
It depends the materials they use as well.
Exactly.
Sure.
But the chances are, smaller lots, you know, from being, just driving around, if you go to areas with small lots, there's modular houses, very inexpensive houses. So, the fact that they're coming with fewer lots, larger lots, leaves a much better chance that you're gonna get a nicer house. And open space.
With different, with different profiles and open space, so, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you. May Zagarelli?
Hi, um, my name is May Zagarelli, I reside at 14 North Bay. I'm here to oppose this project completely, of course, I know what the powers are of the planning board and everything like that, but, you know, when I moved to Eastport, I, I moved here from Hop Hog, I fell in love with this town, it's a quaint country town. Um, one moment I could be at the bay, down on South Bay, and then, one moment, I could be near grasslands and the Pine Barrens. It's truly unique to Long Island, and there's not that much left of that here that we could say, especially on this block, 'cause on this block of North Bay to South Bay, you could be at the bay, and then the grasslands, and then the Pine Barrens. This development is across the street from 41, uh, North Bay Avenue. I actually have gone to Councilman Bouvier about, um, possibly acquiring this land for, with CPF funds. The whole reason why I actually went to him was because I do my runs there, and you, it's across the street from beautiful grasslands, the actual development. you, it's across the street from beautiful grasslands, the actual development. Now, when I go for my runs, I see the deer, um, at night going from that wooded land into the grasslands, which is actually the historic Rayner farmland that the Peconic Land Trust also owns there, um, and that's also right near one of the oldest farmhouses there too as well, the, the Blue House that they own. Um, I would just really hope that an environmental audit is done on this property, I could tell you that there's probably a ton of animals that are, you know, there, and this would really impact the whole area. Um, also, a huge thing is the drainage, I know we already touched on that, but just coming here alone, um, the whole road was flooded, just in that area, so that's something, you know, if we have houses there, I wanna make sure that it's really, um, looked at, and that it's not gonna impact the land there. Um, and lastly, um, I understand that four to five houses could go there, that's ten more cars on this road, it is a county road, it has more traffic, um, we also have trumpets down the road, which a lot of, you know, summer tour, you know, tourists, they come there, we also have the docks, um, the children that are there, uh, they barely have a shoulder to even walk on, um, I see, I have kids cutting through my backyard, and one of the Tuttles, who's my neighbor, um, they have to cut through the actual, our, our land, to make sure that they're not run over by a car or anything like that, so, a lot of these factors really have to be looked into, um, you know, four more or five more houses is going to impact our little road, so, um, I really hope that that's taken into consideration, I completely understand that, you know, they have their right to subdivide and everything like that, but the community is here today to really make a stand that something has to change in this plan. Um, I also, I wish that I could've talked to Mrs. Tuttle, because I honestly would've really loved to put this in a part of the C P F funds, it makes sense, um, if you look at that town of Southampton parcel that's right there, it would've been a great gateway into all the preserved land that's there, um, you have a town of Southampton lot, if we could've bought the Tuttle, uh, lot, it would've gone right into forty-one North Bay, so this is kind of, I think, catching us really off guard, because we were all in the community kind of planning for something too as well, and, um, the Tuttles have made a huge impact on Eastport, I would say they're definitely one of the founding families of this, and I, it's sad that this would be one of their last marks, so, that's all I have.
Great, thank you very much. Phil Torono?
Good evening, I live at nine East Pond Lane, which is just behind, around the block from this developed, proposed development, um, I definitely agree with everything I've heard from my neighbors tonight, and for every one of these people here, there's ten or twenty more at least that feel the same way, and I can tell you that from having spoken to my neighbors, we're a close neighborhood, um, and the same reasons why my neighbors have, have stated why they moved to Eastport, or why they stay or live in Eastport, is because of the, uh, open space and the, the aesthetics of our area, which I know that Southampton has mechanisms to protect aesthetics and the environment, and I think this is an example in which they should use all those mechanisms, whether it's an environmental impact study, hearings like these where we get to be heard, and, um, and learn from you as well, 'cause I've learned a lot just hearing your responses tonight. Specifically in this area that's proposed, I, I worry about fragmenting that, which is, it's absolutely a corridor for wildlife, you know, there's turkeys that come through, there's deer that come through there, there is a trend where people have been clearing their properties, which is, it's their right to do that, but I think this is an instance where if this domino, domino was to fall, it would drastically change the ecosystem that we live in over there. The recharge area that was stated earlier, that there's a, a spot where there's a low point that recharges the pond, that would be something of, of concern also, that if there is runoff that's created, especially if it is sewage-related, if they, you know, install the sewage, um, equipment improperly, um, that could end up damaging the, the pond at East Pond Lane, um, and then lastly, just to say that even if, um, the promises are made by the developers, you know, I've seen projects where everything was planned according to code, and then once it's actually set in motion, it doesn't match, the North Phillips property, the, um, housing that they just put in on North Phillips, they've had problems there, where the, the drainage that was supposed to be below ground is actually above-grade, um, and people have it draining into their backyards, and I've been to hearings on that too, um, so, I, all, all those concerns combined, I just, again, I'm saying I'm grateful that you're here to hear us, and that we can learn from you, and hopefully, um, the town does the right thing related to this.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Heather, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, no, it's time.
Okay, um, yes, um, write your letters, send them to the planning department, and we'll leave this open for thirty days, typically it's ten days, but we'll leave it open for thirty days, thirty-day written comment period, okay, so-
Is there anybody else?
Voice your concerns, is there anybody else who wishes to speak before I close it out? Okay, thirty-day written comment period, thank you very much.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Robin, all in favor, opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one out.
Who would like to read the last one?
There is jurisdiction.
Right.
Matthew?
Matthew, this too? Is it the same?
The same, one's just for copy. Whichever one you can read better.
Okay, notice of public hearing, please take notice, and in accordance with South Hampton, a public hearing will be held by Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, October tenth, twenty nineteen, at six P M prevailing time at Southampton Town Hall, one sixteen Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider the site plan application entitled two eighty, twenty-two eighty-seven Montauk Highway LLC. This site plan application proposes to demolish an existing one-story, one-thousand-square-foot office building and the construction of, of a new two-story office building with associated parking on a twenty-five thousand, two-fifty-eight square foot, also located within the H O zoning district and a New York State archaeologically sensitive area situated at twenty-two eighty-seven Montauk Highway, Hamlet, Bridgehampton, Suffolk County, tax map number nine hundred eighty-six one-two, by order of the Planning Board, Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
That's me.
Mr. Gilmoreton?
For the applicant. David Gilmoreton, Jr., Farrell Fritz, Fifty Station Road Watermill, New York, with me I have Brant Reiner from Inner Science, who will run through the details of the site plan, or be here to answer questions, it's a public hearing, Ms. Wright has assured me she's not here to oppose or speak on it.
Interesting.
We don't really have, uh, anybody from the public here, but I thought I'd start by just giving you a little bit of the procedural background, this property was given several variances back in twenty eighteen, um, those variances were connected to a conditioned negative declaration, uh, part of the conditions of that negative declaration, we were unable to satisfy, went back to the zoning board, they rescinded the, uh, condition neg-dec, gave us a negative declaration, um, and based on a new application, um, gave us the relief that allowed us to develop the property as you, as we presented it, um, the main, and I'll let Brant get into the details, but what we're doing is we are adding thirteen-hundred-and-eighty-three square feet to a thousand-square-foot, um, building already in the back, I think the, um, the driving force, or, or the fact that you should, um, really can, really look at as you consider this, is the zoning board, um, at our offer restricted the, the second floor of that building to the chief executor, officer of Saunders, um, vice president, and to assistants, so the second floor of that structure will be limited to only that use, so, based on that, it was the driving force behind the zoning board granting the relief, it, it looks a little bit bigger than the use will actually be, so I just ask you to keep that in mind as we work.
I'm a little confused, what, the second floor on the existing building, or the second floor on the new proposed building?
On the new building, was restricted.
And literally just those two?
Four, four, those two people plus their assistants.
Okay, and it, it's just no other members of the organization?
Correct, that's correct, and that was the driving force behind the Z B A granting it.
So what's happening with the parking, I know there was some talk at some point that parking would have to be across the street?
That, that was, that was the basis of the condition and negative declaration, we were supposed to get six parking spaces at the Newman Village, um, the prior council had negotiated that with one of the members of the Newman Village, and, and we made the offer in good faith, it turns out that everybody, every, there's, I think, twelve individual owners in there, and they all needed to sign off, and there were some that were unwilling to do that, so we could not purchase those six spaces from them, that's what precipitated our application to rescind the condition negative dec, and we went in, um, in, you know, as, as part of our offer to the zoning board for the parking waiver, I, I think it's, uh, the code has two thousand dollars a spot, and that was a nineteen eighty-four amendment to the code, we offered fifty thousand dollars in total, I think it was ten thousand a spot, so there is a condition within the zoning board that requires us to make that contribution to a parking fund to be used in Bridgehampton.
And the restriction that the top second story only be used for this executive officer?
Yeah, it's in, it's in the decision from the zoning board, if you read it.
So, you know, this board was opposed to spaces across the street, crossing twenty-seven, where there'd been a fatality not too long before we had had this application, um, well, what's happening with the, um, with the health department?
I'll, I'll let Brant speak to that, they're, they're handling that part of the application.
Rooney, before you walk away, is it gonna be a covenant that's going to say the topic can only be used for executive, or how are they?
Uh, that, that wasn't required by the zoning board, but it, it's certainly a part of the decision, and, um, you know, I, I will talk to my clients, see if they'd be willing to do that, but that, that's certainly the intent, and it was pretty clear.
How else, how else would you enforce that condition?
Well, it's a condition to a zoning board decision, and it's a condition of the issuance of a building permit, it's certainly a violation, it's, I think, probably reflected in the site plan, and if there's a violation of the site plan, um, it's, it's a violation under the code, and you can enforce it.
Did the zoning board give a reason for this condition?
Which condition, the, the restriction?
Yeah.
We offered that, that's, that's what the intended use was, and, and that precipitated the waiver of the parking spaces, that, that we were not gonna use it to its full square-foot capacity.
Okay.
That was the offer.
And, and below our offices as well?
Correct.
Okay, can we?
Yes.
Good evening, members of the board, Brant Reiner from Inner Science Research Associates.
Um, there is a requirement of a covenant in the zoning board?
It is?
Yeah, Brant.
Okay, thank you, 'cause I was gonna say that, that just didn't sound like that would fly otherwise.
It's, it's written into the decision.
Okay.
Uh, so Brant Reiner from Inner Science Research Associates, thirty-six Nugent Street, Southampton, New York, um, I think, uh, Mr. Gilmoreton touched on a lot of the basics here, just to go to the health department real quick, there is an application pending review by the health department, um, we are in the middle of the review process, there will be a border review variance associated with this application, because we are transferring density into the site.
So how much are, how, how many gallons are you missing?
Well, the, the gallonage is based upon the grandfathered as-of-right three hundred gallons per day to the site, it's, it's allotted to the site, the proposed flow is going to be three seventy-four, or three forty-eight, sorry, so we are allowed to have three hundred gallons per day as-of-right, because it's a single and separate lot prior to nineteen eighty-one, health department recognizes three hundred gallons per day, we are proposing three hundred and forty-eight, which is an increase from what is currently there today, so the, the excess, um, the excessive density of forty-eight gallons per day will have to be transferred in on pine barren credits, which the applicant is willing to do. So we're in the process of discussing with the health department, the border review variance associated with the pine barren credit transfers.
And where would that come from?
It would be in the town of Southampton.
Same groundwater zone.
Same groundwater zone, and if you don't get that, then you have to reduce the size of your building.
Correct, if the health department doesn't-
The health department's getting more, they want it in the same flow area, as opposed to, you know, up to recently, you could go over to West Hampton, Walworth, pick up the pine barrens credits, now they, they're probably gonna want it from the eastern.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're in discussions with the health department about that exact issue.
Right, you know, this site is a very constrained site, I mean, the parking on it is extremely difficult, there are no islands in between the parking, um, and so-
So, point well taken, um, the improvements to the site will include additional parking, you know, we will be adding three spaces to the, to the site as part of the proposed expansion, um, just run down through real quick, a little bit of details about the site, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, but we haven't been before the board for some time, so I'll just refresh your memory, um, we have two curb cuts on the property, one from Montauk Highway, and the other from Church Lane, the way the parking and, the parking aisles are configured, or parking aisle is configured, is that there's access taken from Montauk Highway through the site with exit out onto Church Lane, reason being is 'cause we have diagonal parking, and it's the way it makes sense, can people come in from Church Lane, sure, they can, um, but being able to park the vehicle is a little bit tricky in that, in that function, so, people generally come in from Montauk Highway, park in the diagonal, and when they leave, come out through Church Lane and go either direction, depending on which direction they are going to be intending to go, so, uh, we also have two office buildings on the site currently, totaling four, uh, forty-four hundred and twenty square feet, the front one is thirty-four hundred, uh, roughly, and the rear one is currently one thousand, that's the, I, I highlighted it in yellow right there, um, building coverage is roughly seventeen point five percent, we currently have eighteen parking spaces, um, the total lot coverage is roughly fifteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty square feet, which is roughly sixty-two percent of the lot coverage, that includes parking and walkways and, and all of those things, so, the applicant is looking to take down the rear building, and expand the rear building, um, in its footprint, and also put a second floor on it, the second floor is the most vital part of this building, because it is intended to house the chairman and the vice chairman of the, of the company, and that is the reason why the, um, Mr. Gilmoreton said Z B, the Z B A was willing to entertain the application, because they understood that that second floor was intended for four people, um, so it will be restricted, it will help to control the parking, um, because you have four people, rather than, say, maybe six or seven people that could've occupied the space, um, it's a, it's a major element that I think the planning board should take into consideration in the review of the application, um, the new building proposal is an expansion by thirteen-hundred-and-eighty-three square feet, so the new building will now be twenty-three hundred and eighty-three square feet, where one thousand currently exists.
Can you just say that again, your expand, the existing building that's there you're taking down?
Is one thousand.
Is a thousand, and now you're going up to twenty?
Twenty, twenty-eight, uh, twenty-three eighty-three.
With two stories?
Yeah.
Yes, so the footprint will expand slightly, you can see the hatched area outside of the yellow, so you have a, a, a first floor expansion here, um, and a little bit of bump outs here, uh, we're maintaining the existing zoning setbacks, we confirm with the building department that is acceptable, and, um, again, the rear, the second story of the rear building will be mostly over what exists there today, um, block coverage is going to be, to twenty-point-two percent, Z B A covered that in the variance application, they granted approval for that.
How much over that is it?
Well, it's, it's, building coverage allowance is twenty percent, we're going to twenty-point-two, so, they're over by point-two percent, but the Z B A granted a, a relief for that, um, parking we touched on, we're adding three new parking spaces, accommodating two handicap spaces where one currently exists, that's to meet town parking standard requirements, we confirmed all of this with the town engineer, who has looked at this thoroughly with us already, um, he's had some comments, and we are addressing them as we go through this process.
The basement?
There is an unfinished basement, um, that is- That is, like, there is currently a basement in it and they're going to put a basement, a new basement in the new building.
Is that going to have ingress and egress to the building?
Yes, there is an access point to the basement on the east side of the building.
Which means it could have offices?
Exterior. It's used for storage. The health department will control that as well. That's, that was.
It'll just say in the C of Office Storage only, okay.
Yes. The health department has made that a point in our discussions with them as well.
So this is not factored into the square footage? I mean, this is just the odd arithmetic that I think buildings where they have basements, first floor, second floor, we only ever get, well, the square footage it's taking up, but not the interior space. So this really adds another, what, thirteen hundred square feet of space? The basement?
Well, the basement is, is used for.
Is it a full basement?
Uh, yeah. It will be used for mechanicals and storage of real estate signs and, you know, the standard office overflow equipment.
The point is, it's still, it's, it's indoor space. So it's.
But it's not, it's not habitable that's bringing people to the site. It's used in function of the business, so it's not increasing the intensity of the use of the building and that's why it's never included in the square footage.
That's right. It's changed. Till the code changes.
Or someone uses it illegally. Right? I mean, that's what I think the board is concerned about is the illegal use of basements where people start to put offices in it. That, that's certainly not the intent here. We had the opportunity to see how the operation runs, you know, and there's an enormous amount of signs and pamphlets and all. So the storage necessary for this really precludes its use as offices or anything else. And, and this, the, what is being asked for, we certainly understand is at the, at the real edge of what this property can really be used for and that's, that's fully understood. So the basement's not going to be used illegally here. And, you know, frankly, this is a very public space, so we understand.
How many, how many offices are on the first level of this?
I can't speak to that without looking at the plans, but I know they have a marketing division on the plan.
There's three offices in a big production?
I know, I know, I know one of the reasons there, I see three offices and a production office and then a conference room. And that was another point, a big part of the rear building is, the conference room currently being utilized in the front office is, is a small conference room and I can attest to that because I was actually in it just a few weeks ago. So they do have a demand for a larger conference room and this new building will give them the opportunity to do that. And yes, I believe that they have a marketing division that will be utilizing this building as well. So.
What's in the production office? Is that, was that where marketing would go?
Again, I think, I think it speaks to the actual real estate use of the, of the buildings. It's a real estate office that has, you know, the demands of, bless you, the demands of current real estate uses, you know, marketing, advertising. That is my understanding that that is what's going to be utilized in this building.
Yeah, I just, I, the label production is what I'm trying to figure out what that means. That's all.
Do you see materials associated?
Yeah, materials. How many real estate pamphlets have you seen recently?
Zero.
I think, I think we can get clarification on that too, if that, if that is a question you have.
I mean, is there going to be a whole lot of people sitting in there or, I mean?
We can get clarification for it.
Yeah, we can get clarification on that. So yeah, there's some improvements to the curb cut along Church Lane. The intention is to preserve landscaping where we can. All the mature landscaping that's there will help with the screening and where we can't, we will replace it or relocate it. The lighting on the, on the property will be Town Dark Sky compliant, of course, and it will be fixed to the building. There is no intention for a site lighting. So just finally, this building is a traditional design with cedar shingles. The intention was for it to blend with the front building and the community and it was my understanding from previous discussions with the planning board a long time ago that the modern, the original modern building that was being proposed here was not a preference of the board. So the design is now in keeping what the board, what the board had originally wanted to see going forward. So we're here to answer any more questions that you might have and listen to Paul McComment, but there aren't.
Well, you never know.
Maybe.
What's your promise?
When a lawyer promises?
Just so the board, just so the board can see.
I always made it to the whole night.
This, this is a, a look at what the building will look like from the front. And this is a shot from Church Lane. So you can see that the building has traditional cedar shingles and white trim.
Very nice.
And gable roofs.
And what's going to be on the terrace?
That's like a deck. Again, it was the applicant's intention to build this thing out fully, you know, and make a full second story here, but we ask him to take into consideration the, the actual size, the massing on the site, and he did. And he's now just going to use this area as like a terrace for, you know, to go out and talk on the phone or have a cup of coffee or something like that. Because his off, that's his office right there.
Well, the water authority is also a guiding factor, any further expansion. So you're keeping the little terrace area between the two buildings?
Yes. The buildings will be disconnected with the terrace area.
Okay, any other questions? And there's no one to speak to, so we'll close with a ten day written comment period. Thank you very much. Motion by.
Thank you. Have a good night.
By Robin. Motion to, oh, I'm sorry, six in favor, one absent. Motion to adjourn by Dennis, second by Phil, all in favor? Six in favor, one absent. We are adjourned.